Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna be led in the pledge by Rockville Elementary students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna have a moment of silence. In the moment of silence, I'd like for us to remember the family of Mr. Bill Harrison. He was former school board member from 1988 to 1998. And Mr. Harrison, he was a dedicated supporter of local education, but he was also an advocate for vocational. So if everybody just remember him and his family in your moment of silence. Thank you. Approval agenda. Got a motion by Mr. Blair, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Proof of consent agenda.
Some move.
Got a second?
Got a second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper, second by Mr. Blair. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Mr. Oldham.
Spotlight on education. We have with us tonight to celebrate this Christmas season from Rockville Elementary, Mr. Donnie Johnson is here, who is the principal of Rockville Elementary, and also Ms. Diane Austin, music teacher. Thank you for bringing these students tonight. It kinda reminds us of why we're in this business and what we do when we get to see boys and girls like this, smiling faces tonight. Looks really good. Thank you for coming.
And we would like to wish you all a very merry Christmas. Hope you have a wonderful season. We've had a good winter, so hopefully not a bad one. It's a wonderful group. I would say I have the best of you.
Welcome, welcome from far and near. We welcome you with all good cheer. Join with us on this festive night with merry hearts and spirits bright. Sing we now most joyfully, delighting in your company. Welcome, welcome from far and near. We welcome you with all good cheer. May this musical feast begin for all good souls to enter in. May we merry and sing on high as glass ambition lifts then reply. Sing we now most joyfully, delighting in your company. Wishing peace and goodwill to all who celebrate within this hall. Welcome, welcome from far and near. We welcome you with all good cheer. Join with us on this festive night with merry hearts and spirits bright. Sing we now most joyfully, delighting in your company. Welcome, welcome from far and near. We welcome you with all good cheer. We welcome you with all good cheer.
This is a song you're all probably very familiar with. It's called "Mary's Song, Breath of Heaven."
I have traveled many moonless nights, cold and weary with a babe inside. And I wonder what I've done. Holy Father, you have come and chosen me now to carry your son. I am waiting in a silent prayer. I am frightened by the load I bear in a world as cold as stone. Must I walk this path alone? Be with me now, be with me now. Breath of heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of heaven. Breath of heaven, light in my darkness, for over me your holiness, for you are holy, breath of heaven. Did you wonder as you washed my face? If the wiser one should have had my place? But I offer all I am. For the mercy of your plan, help me be strong. Breath of heaven, hold me together, be forever near me, breath of heaven. Breath of heaven, light in my darkness, for over me your holiness, for you are holy, breath of heaven. Hold me together, be forever near me, breath of heaven. Breath of heaven, light in my darkness, for over me your holiness, for you are holy, breath of heaven. Breath of heaven. Breath of heaven. Breath of heaven.
This last one is called "Deck the Nutcracker Hall," and it's taken from "Course the Nutcracker" by Tchaikovsky. It's one of our favorites.
Deck the halls with boughs of holly, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Don't we now our gay apparel, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Troll the ancient yew's a carol, fa la la la, la la. See the blazing yew before us, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Follow me and merry measures, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. How I sell love, you use my treasure, fa la la la, la la. Dance the way the old year passes, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. And the new ye learn their verses, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la. Be the circle wind and weather, fa la la la, la la. Fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la, fa la 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 la. Deck the halls with boughs of holly, 'tis the season to be jolly, fa la la, fa la la, fa la 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 la.
Ms. Austin, tell us what age group, or I mean grade group, we got in the choir tonight.
Raise your hand if you're a third grader.
Okay.
Alright, put it down. Raise your hand if you're a fourth grader. Now raise your hand if you're a fifth grader.
Okay.
There you go.
Good representation. It is. Boys and girls, I want you to know, you see those little black and gray boxes in the ceiling? You're on television. And so you can go home later on tonight, or when it runs again, it's on Rutherford County Cable TV, and actually it's on the internet now, too, but you can go in and see yourselves on television as they replay it. So if you wanna look at that, get an opportunity. You ever let Mr. Johnson sing with you?
Yeah.
Well, we do let him dress up as an elf and get onstage, which is what happened a few days ago.
On behalf of the board, I just wanna tell Mr. Johnson thank you for allowing him to come tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate the invitation. Thank you very much.
We do.
Very good job. Thank you.
Any board members?
Just that not only do they have angel voices, they have their yellow faces, too. They didn't offer for us to sing either.
Oh goodness. That was wrong, too, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think you got a pretty good evaluation on that from Mr. Johnson, too.
Number eight.
Number eight. The 2012 Local Education Agency Compliance Report. Local education agencies are required to comply with all state education laws and state Board of Education rules. The annual LEA compliance report form, which is due December 15th, should state deficiencies and compliance plan for each deficiency. The Commissioner of Education will not grant approval to local education agencies that are not in compliance with state education laws and rules and have no Tennessee Department of Education approved plan for compliance. Every school in Rutherford County has reviewed the compliance report form, including state rules and regulations. The 2012 LEA compliance report shows there are no deficiencies for Rutherford County. To recommend approval, the motion is to approve the 2012 LEA compliance report showing there are no deficiencies for Rutherford County schools.
Some move.
Got a second?
Got a second.
Got a motion by Mr. Halliday and a second by Mr. Young. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine.
Number nine is under Financial Matters. Teacher and cafeteria manager living in high school custodian apartments. Our state auditors notified, noticed that we had apartments in the high schools for custodial staff. There was a letter, there's a bullet on page two of the November 26, 2012, letter from the comptroller in the tab. It's easy to correct this issue for the lead custodians or another custodian living in these apartments. We changed their job description so that they are required to live there. The apartments are no longer a taxable fringe benefit for them. We have a teacher and a cafeteria manager who are living at two of the schools. Their apartments are a taxable benefit which must be added to their paychecks to comply with the federal tax code. This $500 taxable fringe is a payroll flow-through through item which nets to $0. A $500 charge to the employee offsets the $500 payroll allowance. We must comply with the $500 per month taxable fringe. The net addition to the budget would be $260 to $300 per month, $2,080 to $3,400 for both employees. This amount will approximately cover the additional federal income tax, FICA, and Medicare that these employees will have deducted from their paychecks. A range between $130 and $150 per employee is shown because FICA is 4.2% right now, but may increase in January 2013. The recommended approval, the motion is to approve a monthly supplement through June 30th, 2013, in the $630 to $650 range total net expenditure of $260 to $300 per month for the two non-custodial employees who are, who by living in the apartments provide additional security and make certain the school property is secured at the end of the day.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mr. Halliday. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the way that the director and the HR staff is taking care of this issue. Mr. Oldham expressed to us on Tuesday night that this was an unanticipated occurrence, and therefore in June, we may make different decisions, but right now, we're gonna take care of an employee that did not anticipate this.
Anybody else? All in favor with motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10.
Number 10 is for information only. It's an executive committee approval. The Rutherford County School Board Executive Committee approved on November 29th, 2012, the emergency purchase of one boiler with a cutoff reset and neutralization kit for Laverne High School. The bid was awarded to Allied Boiler and Supply with a bid of $12,015 to be funded from the maintenance department fund.
Any questions? Number 11.
Number 11 is Zone Exemption Application Process for 2013-14. With Stewart's Creek High School opening, there is a greater need to have accurate enrollment information to help the district plan for teacher transfers, materials, and other equipment. It is necessary to begin the zone exemption process earlier for the 2013-14 school year and to create a deadline for qualifying students to decide if they want to exercise the grandfather option, and also it will be for the siblings, too. Recommend approval, motion to approve beginning the zone exemption process for 2013-14 on February 1, 2013. Those students who qualify for the grandfather or sibling option must submit an exemption application to the central office no later than March 1, 2013. For zone exemption requests to all other schools, parents who submit applications by April 15, 2013, will be given priority consideration.
Word to motion.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion?
Let me ask this, when, since by policy, these zone exemptions will be allowed because it's grandfathering. It will be worded in such a way that that becomes a binding contract, so to speak? In other words, they don't have the option to just go back and forth?
Back and forth? No, sir, we do not do that. I mean, that's part of, part of the requirement. Make your, make your commitment. It's our way of kind of tracking these numbers. We obviously have, based on address, we have a list, which we're generating for the principals of the new school and for the ones that could potentially lose these students if they declare that. So we'll be cross-checking these applications for zoning exemption with the list that we have based upon addresses in the computers.
Yeah, I just wanna be comfortable that the wording would be such, I felt like it would be, that once they made the request to be grandfathered, that's what they would do.
And we do this every year. For those, just for normal zone exemptions that you just can't run back and forth.
Mr. Blair?
And I don't know if this was covered earlier in another meeting, but those that are grandfathered, are they're gonna have to go through getting signature from both principals, or can they just make application and send it in?
No, they do not have to get it from both, because of that. Because, again, we have a list of those names that should match up pretty well if somebody moves in right after Christmas or something like that, in that zoned area, or something like that.
So if they're grandfathered in that zoned area, then all they have to do is submit their desire to accept the grandfathering?
Right. We'll probably ask Mr. Blair to check it over. He starts here on, right after the Christmas break. Him and his secretary will probably look against that names again, to compare again, and make sure we're correct.
Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Motion passes. Number 12, we had a report on that the other evening. Anything further, or board members have anything further from Mr. Oldham? Alright, 13. Legislative updates. I think we had a report from Mr. Blair Tuesday night on several topics that are coming up in the legislative, pretty hot topics, I believe, and he threw out several ideas, and so I'm just gonna leave it open from there.
Mr. Chairman, if the board would like to have some more discussion on any of the issues that we brought forth the other night, I'm good with that. At the end, if it's okay with the board, as the board's TLN representative, I'm prepared to make a motion recommending three issues be sent as resolution to the, to our local legislative body.
Okay.
And I can make that at any time, whenever this board desires.
Anybody have anything further, or wanna bring up? You wanna hear Mr. Blair's motions, or is that good with everybody?
I'm good with the motions.
Okay.
My motion would be that this board would send to our local legislative body resolutions opposing the election of superintendents, school vouchers, and the giving up of local acceptance or declining of charter applications, charter school applications. I also have some sample resolutions that I can share with Ms. Michaels, the board secretary, in putting those together also.
I got a motion, okay? If I give a second, then we'll discuss. Second, Mr. Tackett. Discussion, Mr. Tackett?
You mentioned Tuesday night, it would be appropriate to make three separate resolutions as opposed to a resolution with three parts to that. Is that what you intend to do?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Yes, three separate resolutions.
Mr. Halliday, you got anything?
I totally support the motion that's on the table. I think that these are each important stands that we need to make certain our legislators understand our position on. I'm impressed that our legislators not only have come and had conference with us, along with Murfreesboro City School Board, to hear our concerns, but they have a track record of voting in line with these measures that we're taking tonight, and I hope that we can count on them to continue to do so.
Anything further? I guess, you got some samples?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I guess, from sort of way I located it, if, Mr. Reed, if you worked Ms. Michaels on those before we sent them, is that okay with the board?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with that? Alright, we've had the motion by Mr. Blair, and we've had a second, second by Mr. Tackett. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so. Ms. Michaels, if you'll get with Mr. Reed and get that done, we appreciate it.
Chairman, we might, again, a larger discussion of this took place on Tuesday night, and it's recorded there on the internet, and go back and reference that. These are complex issues, and I would encourage the general public as well to step forward and get in touch with their legislators and let them know the way that they feel about these important issues. These are three topics that can have a large impact on our school system, and that's why the board is taking this measure.
Thank you.
And with the board's permission, I would be willing to put together, or, Mr. Chairman, if you desire to maybe write an op-ed for the, for the D and J, expressing the opinion of the board regarding these issues, too, so we can not only get it through our media here, but also get it in print and share that with the community.
You and I can get together and do that if we need.
Yes, sir.
Do that. Number 14, general discussion. Anybody else right now? Mr. Blair?
I just, this has really been an incredible year. The, so, so many pats on the back for this, for our education system. We've done so well, you know, comparatively through the, through the state. Not only has our education been recognized for its effort, this board has been recognized for its effort statewide, and that all comes back to the leadership of the director and your department heads and the staff throughout the system, be it certified or classified. But, you know, we have, we certainly have problems as any other system, but we're so blessed to have so many professionals that are willing to give their time and resources to make this the best system, best system possible, and it's an honor to get to serve in this position, and it's an honor to have so many positive relationships with so many professionals, and just grateful, especially during this holiday season, to get to appreciate that and celebrate that, Mr. Oldham. Mr. Odom?
I was sitting with Murfreesboro Police Chief Christman this morning, and he made the statement to me, and he says, you know, because they encounter so many people, but because of Murfreesboro City Schools and Rutherford County Schools and the achievement that they're doing, they continually hear this is one of the biggest draws to this area, you know, is the quality of the schools. And I think it speaks for itself.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me say something about, this week, Mr. Young and Ms. Blankenship and I, along with Mr. Odom, attended Rutherford, well, the Chamber of Commerce Workforce Development Project, whatever they want to call it. And there were a lot of good came out of it for businesses want to work and come into the schools. And, you know, if Mr. Odom could go on and just say a few words about what we're doing with them, I'd appreciate it.
With the Chamber of Commerce, along with Sandy Ponder is the person that's working with some of the workforce development and all. Right now, we're seeing Nissan, and you heard today, the battery plant is opening, 1,000 employees, and that sort of thing. The issue that they're having primarily with industrial maintenance is that there is a shortage of people that they can employ. And so, they're saying they're having to spend sometimes $25,000, $30,000, I heard the other day, to bring someone in here from somewhere else. That's a shame. You know, we don't have people qualified. So, we're working on a curriculum with Kane Nixon and the others that we've worked on with Nissan and all, too. There'll probably be a new CTE offering starting next year. There's a couple of programs. One of them is Megatronics, that's with Motlow. MTSU is beginning to become a player in this also. The other program is one that, with career and technical education, that students go through a set curriculum, which is being developed now, that Nissan says if they will go through this curriculum, very good possibility that we can hire them right away. They could be one of our employees. And they're even willing to, after they finish this program, they said maybe we might train them for six more months or something to really get them to specialize a little bit more. But these industrial positions like this, these industrial maintenance positions, 40, 50, $60,000, you know, that's there. The actual, the Defense Department is now doing corridors. There's one on the East Coast, the other one kind of goes from Huntsville and up. I think I spoke with this before, maybe up to Michigan and all, that, that they know for the future of the United States that we've got to maintain the ability to, to have devices and create things to keep us a leader in the world. And so, they're saying that, that the meetings they're attending for this, we're talking about figures in the three-digit range, over $100,000. And these are not necessarily people that are college graduates. We're talking about people that are highly specialized. So, there's some things that'll be happening. I think Oakland on January 30th, I believe I'm right, is going to have a kind of an open house with some of these workforce people. It's going to bring in some of these programmable logic machines to see really where it is. The parents that are listening to us now, when you think of machine shop or workshop, you thought of the dirt and the grime. These things now are so clean because of the dust and the requirements of it. It's just a really different world. So we're going to have some opportunities for our students, if they choose to do that, that I think opens up another world to them. So you're going to hear lots about this. We want to be a part of it in advertising and pushing this out. There's opportunities to our parents, but we just need to let our parents know what's out there for, for these students.
The one thing I'd like to add is that, you know, the word was that manufacturing is dead, but it's really not dead. It's, it's going to be a lot of growth in that area in the next few years, and even years to come after that, so. That's a, it's going to open a window of a lot of opportunities for a lot of young folks.
Coming back to the United States, they actually told us, what was the draw?
Yes, the save of freight costs and all that. And it's going to be very inviting to get those companies back over here.
All right, you want to make reference to the?
The other thing that we promised you Tuesday night would be a draft of our possible building projects for five years. And so, we'll, can put this on the agenda in January again. We do need to kind of vote on some of it. As you look at this, of course, the Eagleville addition is there, which is basically complete. And then the other one, the Stewart's Creek High is ongoing, as you can see that, for August 13th, scheduled for opening. The other thing that we need to do in March, this is the ADA compliance modifications for Laverne High School and Smyrna High School. And we'll be asking you to approve that we take this to the commission at a major capital repair so that we can go ahead and begin this project. So that when football season starts in the fall, both of them will have an area for students that may be in wheelchairs to be in an area where they can see the ballgame. So that's what that is. As we look down at the other projects, and of course, there's still so many unknowns, but the first thing we're going to basically recommend was a Blackman Middle Annex, and that was one that several of you spoke to me about, simply is to try to have spaces for students as we continue to grow. So that would be a thing that we would give highest priority. The Smyrna Primary Edition's been there for quite a while. There, too, that deals with that library addition down there, and also additional classrooms. It's been long overdue that that school kind of picks up some things. So we would put that in there together. The next year, we're talking about the Roy Waldron addition. You know, we built Laverne Lake, we already have portables at Laverne Lake, and we have portables at Roy Waldron. So what we're seeking to do here is get this kind of on a relatively fast track so we can go ahead and make an addition there. And maybe the rooms can handle the situation from Laverne Lake and Roy Waldron, both, that we can, can do that. The other thing that, David, your renovation, and Mr. Halliday, you spoke to this. Part of that's a security thing, to change that entrance in the area. And you saw the presentation on that the other night. And then the other, we want to, we brought things back that were on the old plan that we just did not get to, to keep it in front of us some. The others is Laverne High School and Smyrna High School bleachers. And there's an estimated cost there, and we're looking at maybe major capital repairs, fund 177 to do that again, but that, that's back up there. Also, the Eagleville High addition. Now, the reason, basically, it's in this position is because the sewer. Where will it be at that time? Because it's going to really take, if they can get that grant to the secure, to get the sewer situation, then we can evaluate when that really needs to be done. Also, we have the option to add on to Segal High School, which they already have portables there, you know, too. And that was in part of the original drawing from the architect for Segal had to be added at that point. So again, that's very cost-effective. The next thing that's there for the next two years, elementary or middle? And we're saying elementary probably first, and then middle. Great thing depends on what happens, how quickly Murfreesboro can get their elementary school in place. So we're basically saying kind of from Murfreesboro westward. You know, will it be closer to the Blackman area? Or will it be closer to Rock Springs or somewhere in the Smyrna-Laverne area? It kind of depends on where the growth occurs, and what happens, how the city joins us in this. And that's also true with the middle school. Hopefully, the Blackman addition will buy us a little bit of time there in the middle school. So, that's going to be our recommended priorities, but bring it back for discussion in January and see if we, other suggestions you may have, or changes, or changing the priorities.
Mr. Odom, we're always interested in making sure the public has a advance notice of any pending changes, and this reminds me again of the comments that you made Tuesday night about the possibilities of some zone changes around Blackman Elementary, right?
We're, we're looking at that now. That number of those families in that area are in both a city zone and a county zone. The issues that we have, Blackman Elementary is over 1,100. As I said Tuesday night, it begins to affect your instructional program simply because the time of day, they have to start lunches. It's not a matter of stacking more portables alone. It is being able to get through the lunch line, to have the security, to get more students, whether it's the restrooms, everything begins to play in that together. So, you know, that, that, we may have to look at zoning some students because we're probably at least two years off, the city starts building from an elementary school. We may have to do something to try to create some capacities. And Brown's Chapel is a place that is not full at this time. So that's what we're looking at to see, and Mr. Morgan's working on it now. In fact, we looked at it today, to about three different plans and all to see. But it's going to be deep in the city area to pick up students.
Likewise, as we wrapped up the Stewart's Creek rezoning conversation, we saw the possibility of Blackman Middle needing something to get us to that point where we would have an expansion there, that it may be a few zone changes would help us bridge to that construction project.
It's possible. We could probably, if we can get the priority, and the commission will fund the addition at Blackman Middle to give us that additional capacity there. Maybe with another portable or two or so, we might even get by another year at Blackman Middle, until that addition opened, and be able to move all the portables away. But, I mean, that, that's something we're just going to have to see.
Did we say what the capacity of Blackman Middle would be then, with the annex?
We looked at, see, we build them normally, we say 1,000. Really, 850s that are, can handle 1,000. We're looking in that it was, how many additional rooms?
I don't recall, but it's sixth grade, whatever.
It was, it was sixth grade with, was it six on the bottom, 12, 12 rooms? And your sixth grade, your, your sixth grade, third, fourth, fifth is 25 to one. So it could be, usually, we don't put it 30 to one, but you can kind of do the math. If you wanted to do that, you can kind of 30 times 12 more rooms, 360, so. Could increase by that much theoretically.
A large middle school.
It's bigger than I like middle schools. That's not my desire, but we're dealing with growth.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to bring something in January on this?
I think we need to place it on the agenda, and whenever you choose to do so. And, and we do need to go ahead probably and approve it in January because we were requested by Health and Ed that we need to get it to them, you know, in January or February, to get this process rolling.
Okay. Anything else? I'd, I'd like just to echo what Mr. Blair said. This fall, we've covered an awful lot of ground, and, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we've probably, we've probably had 100% attendance, I believe. Probably, close to it, every, every meeting we've had. And I appreciate everybody on the board being here. And it, I think it says a lot for the board, that we're all energetic, I guess, out here as many meetings we've had. Sometimes, I don't know if I'm going to a meeting or coming for one. But it's been a good fall.
Your three new board members have really been contributing members, really, from the start, which is a great thing. You're representing your people very well, and became a part of it very quickly.
We kind of liked them a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd also add that they probably had a lot of crash courses, too. Quick crash courses, but, but it's been good. And if there's nothing else, all minds are at ease. We're adjourned.